I just want to talk to the commission. There seems to be some confusion about the SRO grant. And I want you to understand, if you remember, I came in July and Mr. Phelps and I went to training in July, I think it was July 1st or 2nd about this grant. Last year or this past legislative session, Governor Lee proposed a $35,000 grant for every school to have an SRO officer that does not presently have one. To give you an example, the other two counties in our district, they couldn't apply to the grant because they already have SROs in their schools. So it's just for schools throughout the state that did not have an SRO. So we actually have seven schools. We included the Senator Frinke last year, Career Technical Center, because it actually has a school number. That's what they told us to do. So we applied for four SROs in our county. Doesn't mean we have to have them, but if we get them, there'll be $35,000 with a 25% match that we would be responsible for as a county, schools, or city, whoever decides to hire officers. But also, part of that grant is income. We're already needing the income because when you look at our budget, the county spends $17,400 for a half SRO. The city spends $35,000 for a full SRO. And the school system spends $52,000 for a SRO and a half. So that's the way the funding is now. I don't know where all the confusion comes because we just received this grant July 31st. So we hadn't had a commission meeting. It hadn't even been publicly announced. So I think maybe we may have jumped the gun. And so I have sent an email to both mayors, the sheriff and the chief of police and said, you know, let's sit down and see what's going on. But I know a couple of you calling and I'm not law enforcement. I have no deal, I mean, obviously work together, but as far as their budget goes and what those officers cost, I cannot answer that. All I can tell you is the next two years, the Department of Education has put grant money out there in the amount of $35,000 with that 25% match that we are eligible for an SRO in the four schools that we currently do not have. So there's also another grant called a school safety grant. We've been receiving that grant for years. It was $12,400 for my first five years. And then last year, if you remember, Governor Haslam doubled it. And we also received a little over $40,000 non-reoccurring fund. We use that to help with cameras, perimeter. And last year, you could use that money to help with SROs. So we added, we always, that's all we ever, we used the safety grant for in the past when it was $12,000, just to help with the SROs. You can't spend that money on new SROs. If there's new SROs, it has to be this new SRO grant. This year, we're going to receive $51,290. They doubled that and that is reoccurring, but that has to be spent on school safety. We actually have a bid that was opened in August to go ahead and put HD cameras in all our schools. Currently, we have them at high school. We're having them sell at elementary and holiday this month. And then we're taking bids at the end of this month to make sure all our schools have HD cameras, hopefully by fall break, but for sure by night school. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I apologize if there's any confusion, but I want you to understand, this grant was only awarded in July and it has not been publicly acknowledged. I think Mr. Phelps and I were talking, I think the Dixon County Sheriff was talking about it today in the Tennessee Senate, so it's becoming public knowledge.
Partly I have a concern in what actually qualification it takes to be there. You know, the sheriff talked to us and assuming it has to be a complete sense of school, he's been $6,500 sending a person to school for this. What is going to be the qualification? That's what we need to know. And it's also wanting to have a car. I don't see where the cars that much necessary. I mean, you've got cities that work with a tractor now. They're going to continue doing it. I figure SRO would be in school with the safety of first names.
I can't speak for law enforcement. I can tell you, I don't know of any county that has an SRO where they don't have a pro car. Now, there's a bunch of options. You can go to Hendrick County and they've got Camrys, Dodge, Caravan. I mean, I don't know. I'm assuming they're probably taking vehicles that were confiscated through the Drug Task Force and using those. That would be a question for the chief or the sheriff because I'm not qualified to answer this. Now, as far as qualifications, they have to be a certified police officer with two years' experience. I can't, that's in code. So they would have to be a certified police officer that's been in law enforcement for two years.
So that's what we need to know because we don't, you know, when you talk about that $35,000 and you send them to school, $6,500 and whatnot, it's going to touch quite a bit of money.
And the mayor and I talked about it earlier this week. It's one of those things where I think the state is offering these grants to try to help the counties, you know, that don't have schools with SROs. Because if you're Hendrick County, Stewart County, or a lot of counties, they're not very happy because they already have SROs and they're not eligible for these grants.
I'd like to see a minute.
Are there any school resources officers, just like 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM? Or are they school events? You know, they have added duties because that would tell whether we need a part-time or a full-time. And like I said, I went on record the other night saying, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when this grant kind of gives us a good two-year. It could go longer, but more than likely, by the time they invoke these things for a two-year grace period and then kind of pull the funding. And so the county needs to also be prepared financially down to go with whether we would continue this arrangement on our own or rely on the grant.
I agree with you, Mayor. I don't think the grant could probably be forever, but it is a way for the counties to get started. We right now pay for the sheriff's department or the city police, they actually, we pay them to work the ballgame. But we have discussed, a lot of counties that have a full-time SROs, they will work extra, create their activities. And then they'll use comp time like fall break, spring break, Christmas holidays to make those up. And then they'll just work in the summer with the departments. Now, some districts have, with their SROs, just like teachers, they work that schedule with exception. They have to work in the summer to make up their time. From talking to the sheriff and the chief, I think with the small staffs that they have, they just pretty much have to have them in the summer if we eventually can find SRO. I mean, in a perfect world, if we could just find three. Obviously, we need one that holiday in Dixie, which we split time now. We have one at high school and junior high. Most of the time, they'll even go to Wrightwood and elementary. You've heard me say this before. If I'm a parent at Camden Elementary and it's the second largest school in the district, I'm wondering why it don't have a full-time SRO there. I can't argue that. But if I'm a parent that holiday and I'm farther from, I'm farthest from the city limits, I have the same question. So there's questions coming from everywhere. We're not the only county. I think Officer Lowery would tell you, they're not easy to find. They're not.
Is that a renewable grant from year to year?
It's, the only guarantee is two years. And I think that's where we have to sit down, is the city and a school system and a county and say, okay, this is example, SRO costs $50,000. I'm just rounding that. If we have six of them, that's $300,000. So school, are you going to pay for half? And county, are you going to pay for a fourth? And city, are you going, whatever we divide, we have to decide. Because I've told you before, if we put an SRO in every school, I don't want to be the one to tell Ashley Travis we're going to pull them out because we can't pay for them. That's, and what we have, I mean, the SROs we have, and with addition to Mr. Phelps, I mean, I think our schools are safer than they've ever been. But that, I hope we can eventually at least have one in every school.
Is this something that could use like the retired police officer, retired sheriff's officer?
They have to be a commissioned police officer. So my understanding is that after five years, you lose your commission, is that right? So if they're retired and within five years and they still have their commission, that would be a possibility.
And would you clarify how Mr. Phelps is paid and how his funding?
I will. And first of all, I'm not, I mean, his salary is public knowledge, but Mr. Phelps has been a God since, I'll just, I'll tell you that. He retired from the TBI and we have a, we have a safety audit of our school system two and a half years ago. And Michael Gordon was safety at institutions all over the world. And I asked Steve to kind of go with us. And the first thing when we got done, Michael said, why in the world did you not hire that guy? So I don't mind telling you, we've paid Mr. Phelps $15,000 for the last 10 years. And that's all grant money. We have a retired TBI officer that has a world of experience. And he didn't have a world of experience in school safety, but I assure you, he knows more about school safety than anybody in this room now because that's what he's done the last two years. I consider Mr. Phelps a friend, but he's the most diligent, hardworking person I know. He spends all his time making sure our schools can be as safe as possible. So I think it's been money well spent. We've used grant, we've used our safety grant to do that. We did bump him up a little bit this year because he's spending a lot of time. I mean, he's part-time, but his experience and expertise is hard to put a price on. So that responsibility for years fell into the director of schools. I'll just be honest with you, I can do all I can, but there's, it just, you get an overload. And so that, I thought that was money well spent since we had the grant money out there.
Any more questions?
Speak when you got it.
Well, we should appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Ma'am. Appreciate you.
I'm Tasha Gurley. I'm with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network. I cover the West Tennessee region, but thanks to Governor Lee, we have been able to add additional funding across our state. And we have been able to hire a Memphis Shelby County Director and a Southwest Director. So I'm coming before you. I know I'm a new face and you are also new faces for me. But I would be covering the nine Northwest Counties. And so my interest is, is getting Benton County to a suicide safer community and county. And to let you know some of the benefits that we have available. Everything that we provide is free. We provide free trainings for suicide prevention. We also have a post-vention debriefing team. So what that means is when there's a death in the county of Benton, we would go out and support that family, that school, that church, that business, whoever is affected by that suicide, and then connect them to their resources in that community. We can do trainings anywhere. And I was just, as he was talking about budget, I was reflecting on how much it costs per one suicide. In the year 2016, for one suicide, for a male or female, it's an average of $25,300 just for a hospital visit. And then an additional $6,000 if they're hospitalized and treated. And as you know, that cost raises as we age. It is more difficult for our bodies to repair, depending on what method that person chose. I feel very passionate that prevention has to be in the forefront of our minds. And we have to be very proactive about giving people the help that they need, whatever that looks like. I've been working with a veteran, we were just talking about veterans, I've been working with a veteran all weekend today to keep him alive. And what I know is it takes people like you and a county that's going to connect people to the care that they get. He's choosing life today, but Friday was not the case. So I have my cards here. We met with mayor today and we signed a proclamation, September Suicide Prevention Month. So you will see, across the state, we'll be hosting several outreach and awareness events. And so if there's anything that I can do to serve Benton County in any way, I would like to talk with you and to hear from you on what needs that you know of and how I can further support you.
Tasha, where's your office at?
So I'm currently homeless. I'm in transition. I've been living, I've been in Jackson, Tennessee, Maxon County is where the county seat has been, but I will be moving to Carroll County and Huntington. Across from the high school, if you're familiar with the Job Center, Career Center, my office will be in there.
Let's see, Suicide happens tonight in Benton County. Are you, does somebody contact you? Do we have to contact you? Do you automatically get that notification or what?
That is what we would like, to be able to implement our post-vention debriefing. If we can make contacts with our sheriff. And we would then get our team out to meet with that family or that school. Of course, they mentioned the Department of Ed. The Department of Ed pushes that they contact Tennessee Suicide Prevention if there is a death by suicide in any school across the state. Now, we don't, we're not a crisis service, so we don't respond to the crisis. That's where your care counseling is your crisis center here. So we would continue to implement that crisis service. But we would come in after the crisis service has been provided to do the debriefing, to get them connected back to why's it happened. And we're going to go now and forward.
Thank you. And you also do like training, training awareness, being able to pick up on signs?
Yes. So again, I mentioned in the beginning, our trainings are free. And we train people. I've been actually in Ollie County training, the Discovery Park this past week, warning signs, protective factors. And ultimately, when you identify those warning signs and protective factors, what do you do with it? Because many people, you can recognize the warning signs, but if you don't know what to do and you don't know how to intervene with that person at risk, what our training does is gets people prepared to recognize what it looks like and then how to handle that. Who are your resources? Who would you call? You know, they mentioned the veteran. They didn't know who to call. They didn't know their community mental health provider in town. They didn't know where to go get him any help. And so part of what we do in that training is teach people in the county what their resources are and how to get in contact with them if they need any mental support.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes.
I just sent an email to Mayor Lassie and other mayors. I got, I regularly get emails from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services or anyone, Tasha knows about this already, but there's grant opportunities and other funding opportunities. Anyone interested in that mental health, they can contact Mayor Lassie. And there's a website, we don't look for funding opportunities to help address some of these issues. There's no guarantee, but it's worth a looking.
Great. Anybody have any more questions? Ms. Tasha? Do you have any? My father, Ms. Tasha?
I just appreciate you allowing me to be here. It's very passionate and near and dear to my heart for personal reasons. And so I just want to let you know that I'm open and available. And one suicide is one too many. And we've got to address it as a community.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Prey, please.
Yes, you mentioned something about catching with an individual. Did you say that you're into the preventing, you know, like finding out if someone is suicidal and you go to them and help? Is that what it's about or is it after it happens?
Both.
Both?
So if we get a call and this could be the family, it just happened to be a Carroll family, they know what I do. And this people, person without reaching any confidentiality, the family just called and said, this is what's happened. We don't know where to go. We don't want to be these outpatient, inpatient, we don't know what to do because this is, this is not something we deal with every day. And so basically, from Friday until today, we got him into an in-pay appointment and he's still an inpatient. So basically, just triaging the family and the community mental health provider. As y'all know, sometimes you may go to a provider and you may not, you get shuffled around sometimes. And so we just can help triage that basically so that we can get people into where they need to be.
You're advertising the paper so that the county would know that the services are there?
Yes. Yes.
Your name, Father? Your doc? Thank you, Ms. Tasha.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This line out of eight, approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Seven, mistress, four, might I speak? Mistress Four. Yes, we're talking.
Mark Packard, we got this commission rule, the order of procedures. And the law enforcement committee has been highlighting. I'm just wondering why else we've done that.
I let the mayor speak on that. You live around that highlighter.
I think we're working from a previous edition that was already highlighted prior order and probably bring attention, maybe there's a change in that in prior one. So it's time to find the ground that you'll get, but that's something that was probably added in prior, you know, prior change from the previous.
Any name, Father? Mistress Four. I think it's broken, bring it up in this, that Mr. Phil Key has made his personal resignation. He's called me in the fifth district. So the mayor is actually, will be posting in the newspaper this coming month to fill that position in the fifth district. Phil's had some sickness. I hate to say him that, but he's my heart. But he's facing some several surgeries and he felt it was bad for him to step down during this time. But we're going to miss Phil Key, I tell you. He's kind of kept us all going. I bet he misses. But next month, we'll be advertising to fill that position. Just want to show that we, he did, I did talk to him and he gave his personal resignation that he was no longer able, that he's going to miss it. I want to show that. Anything, brothers, any questions? Yes, ma'am. We're going to have approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion, Ms. Dana?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Prey, my mother. All in favor?
Aye.
For those, I've had it. Thank you. For the public, you tell it.
Didn't we get that? I'm asking.
No, we did not. It was, we're trying to close their books out. We got it.
Okay. I'm hard to vote on if we don't have something to work with.
Motion, the paper?
This tape, this next month.
Motion.
Have a motion, ma'am. A second, ma'am. Please, Mr. Prey. All right, nine out of 10. I'm going to have to, softball, there's neither. Approval of Benton County Girl Softball Leas agreement for 2019 and 2020.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Motion, ma'am. Mark?
Dana?
Dana, second. All in favor?
Yes, ma'am. We might have voted on that motion in second. We got just a minute over there.
On the motion, we pulled the table, on the, on the.
No, you made a multiple table. We might have voted on that paper.
I thought we did it. I thought we voted. I'm sorry, let's go back to the eighth. Yeah, on the eighth, on the. All in favor?
Aye.
Charity? I've had it. For those, pass.
Thank you.
All right. Have a motion on 10. Leader Hall, favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I've had it. For those. Nine out of 11, resolution to allow Tennessee County Elections Commission to apply for reimbursement of the American Vote Act, State Grant, to acquire computer hardware and software items for the election office. The motion?
Make a motion.
Kenny made a motion, made a second.
Second.
Second, my lady.
Do you want to tell me who did that again?
Kenny made the motion, second, my lady. All in favor?
Aye.
I've had it. For those, for curious. Nine out of 12, resolution to point the sheriff to afford field and vacancy on the P911 Board for a term set to expire September 18, 2021. The motion?
Motion.
Motion, ma'am. Patton, second.
Aye.
Second, Mary Powers. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's discuss that.
Discussion?
I just, you know, sheriff's got a pretty full plate. Are you sure that you want to put that on it too?
The sheriff is very much in favor of serving on that board, so.
I was going to say, the appointment normally comes to the mayor's office, but the sheriff gets a designee on that particular board. Mr. David Markham currently is his designee on that board and Mr. Markham has expressed he might could go ahead and kind of retire off. And so the first person I referred to was the sheriff, you know, to allow him that pick. And so he chose to delegate himself to serve on that board. And I wasn't, again, his choice. I wanted to honor that and stick with it and allow him that privilege.
Go back, that's all in favor?
Aye.
For those, I've had it. Here's. Nine out of 23, resolution to amend deposit revenue in the highway department budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second, my lady. Ms. Dana? Have a roll call vote. Any discussion on this matter of what's going on? No discussion? Just wanted to give a roll call vote.
Dana Ferguson?
On the motion, we pulled it, on the, on the...
On the table?
No, he made a multiple table. We might have voted on that favor.
I thought we did. I thought we voted. So, let's go back to the eight. Yeah, on eight, on the... All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, I have it. No, pass.
Thank you.
Have a motion on team. Leader, favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have it. No. Nine out of eleven, resolution to allow Benton County Elections Commission to apply to reimbursement of help America Vote Act State Grant to acquire computer hardware and software items for the election office. The motion?
Make a motion.
Kenny made a motion. Name's second.
Second.
Second, by Richard.
Do you want to tell me who did that again?
Kenny made the motion. Second, by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
I have it. No, curious. Nine out of twelve, resolution appointed the sheriff to fulfill field vacancy on the P nine one one board for a turn set to expire September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The motion?
Motion.
Motion by... Patton, second.
Out.
Second, Mary Piers. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's discuss that a little bit.
Discussion?
All right, I just, you know, the sheriff's got a pretty full plate. Are you sure that you want to put that on it?
Uh, the sheriff is very much in favor of serving on that board, so.
No, wait a minute, please.
I was going to say, the one normally comes to the mayor's office, but the sheriff gets a designe need on that particular board. Mr. David Markham currently is his designe need on that board. And Mr. Markham has expressed he'd like to go ahead and kind of retire off. And so, the first person I've heard it was the sheriff, you know, to allow him that pick. And so, he chose to delegate himself to serve on that board. And I wasn't, again, his choice. I wanted to honor that and stick with it and allow him that privilege.
Go back. That's all in favor?
Aye.
No, I have it. Curious. Nine out of twenty-three, resolution amendment deposit revenue in the Highway Department Budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year.
Motion, President.
Home from the trailer. Second by, Ms. Dana, have a roll call vote. Any discussion on this matter of what's going on? No discussion? Just wanted to give a roll call vote.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Carrie Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darrell Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion, the period. Nine out of fourteen, resolution budgeting funds in the amount of eighty hundred and seventy dollars received through silent auction fundraiser for the Benton County Senior Citizen Center.
Motion.
Have a motion, Ms. Dana?
Second.
Second by Kenny. Any discussion?
Yes. They, the money that they want, they want it in their miscellaneous account. So, we need to amend it to be out of account number five nine nine miscellaneous instead of food supplies.
Five nine nine, other charges.
Did you say five nine nine?
Yes.
Five nine nine.
So, you're just changing the line out of five nine nine, other charges.
I said a promotion.
I mean, the motion on that, you, you made the motion, you second. I think they don't second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Says take a vote. And actually, I just wanted, if you have a roll call vote. She made the mo, uh, Dana made the first one. She made the motion, no, she'll make the second.
Two of us and now...
I made the motion, uh...
I want to make the motion.
As amended.
I have a motion, second, sir. Kenny second. All in favor?
No.
I have it. I have it. Nine out of fifteen, resolution budgeting funds in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars received through a technical grant at C of Camden Courthouse with Benton County Library.
Motion.
Any discussion? Second.
Second, break.
Break. Oh, I thought you said...
I did, second.
I thought you did, I'm sorry. Any discussions? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No. Curious. Nine out of sixteen, resolution budgeting the interest earned from will and testament of Ola W. Florence, built to Benton County to help or to help assist in project help offered through the Benton County Electric System in the amount of eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents.
Motion.
The patent made motion?
Second.
This, second, Ms. Dana. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I carry. Seventeen, resolution appropriating funds in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from the courthouse or courtroom security reserve account in order to install two additional security cameras in the courthouse, upgrade the video storage capacity. The motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Patton?
Second.
Second, Kenny. Any discussions?
This is new money.
It's a new money. Yes, Mr. Piers.
This might be for the mayor. Who is on that board?
Uh, no, the Chancery Judge, Judge Whitworth, Doug Markham. I don't know if the property committee chair and by default on their mind, uh, whoever. Sam Ringwater. And I know one of them they're going to put on the outside door. They definitely need one more outdoor camera and they're going to have an indoor camera, either on the stairwell or right out there outside.
Any further? Discussion?
And although you say it's new money, it's new money to the budget, but it's money already in the reserve account.
Just wanted to have a roll call, please.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Leah Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Carrie Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darrell Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion.
Motion, period. Nine out of nineteen, appointed notary. I have two new notaries here, Christine Dean Horton and Rebecca Scott Love. The motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana? Second, Ms. Patton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Period. No. Line item nineteen, any other business? We're talking.
I guess this is the mayor's department. I'm not sure.
Let's pick up a couple.
I'm not sure who this is going to be to the old commissioner and mayor. But are we still invested in a solid waste department? You know, that's not takes the time. I don't want to waste my time.
I think it's a serious matter that we need to be involved in it, to do something. It's something that I think part of our money comes back here. And I think, yes, we do need to, I think, make it like, with them.
Well, I mean, we've already gotten endorsement from Solid Waste Board. They have pretty much passed their support of creating a solid waste department. I as mayor, of course, departments don't come for free. And so, we need to be financially prepared before we embark on that. I do think we need to continue working towards one day spinning up a department fully capable of operating under its own feet financially and manpower wise. So, I'm still committed to ensuring that we continue to push forward little by little by little. But let's do it smart, let's do it wisely. And in the meantime, I'm kind of the info on solid waste department, you know. And I can use so many things for setting this up, giving structure. But ultimately, we need to decide whether we're serious about it, as you said, and have a bona fide solid waste department. A lot of people think we don't. They don't understand that we don't need one because they see that we don't have a, we don't own a landfill. So, I think the mindset in the past has been, why have a solid waste department if we technically don't have a landfill? But we stick with the illegal dump, the, you know, the illegal dumping that we have. And also, the desire to have some type of recycling programs within our county. Waste management is never going to operate recycling. They will give us space, they will assist us. But it's not waste management's responsibility to have a recycling program. That is something that the people of the county embark on. And so, you know, that, it's one of my most frequent questions that I get. Why don't we have more recycling, more recycling, more recycling? And so, these solid waste departments are a critical element of being able to put something in place to give the ability to recycle. So, I'm, y'all know I'm passionate about it as well. I do feel that the county definitely needs one. But I don't want to come to the body and ask for, you know, the creation of it until we're prepared somewhat financially to be able to sustain it.
So, shouldn't the solid waste board meet more often than once a quarter?
Well, they've been meeting pretty regularly. At one time, they were meeting every month. And so, so they, they, you know, they've got a disassembled period right now. I'm going to tell you, they're doing it every other month, sort of.
I haven't, I'm on the board and I haven't received any, any danger for the next meeting.
Well, I know that we haven't met in the last, probably a couple of months, but I'll speak to the chairman and see if he's got a agenda filed to, to last night. It's the last time we met there. I heard you got there and see about something else. But I believe the last time we met, y'all did endorse the creation of a solid waste behind the board. The last meeting we had was a year. We wasn't there to control it.
Anything further? I would mention, September the sixteenth is our next meeting. The chairman's coming at thirty minutes early to meet. We'll be electing a new chairman next month also. It's like, I need to go for a chairman or what? Initially, you need to come in at five thirty. Your attorney's going to come in with us at seven o'clock also.
On time?
I don't know if you would be allowed to. Tractor may catch you now.
Of course, there's a reason why it relates to urgency for a ten-year-old child. This DCS has to get following, so they won't let them have the mental treatment. So, that's how much killing that's easy. But I'll call ahead if I'm on the road.
Yeah, we go, we go with your plan. All right, then, lead us to the chairman. Need a motion?
Chairman, the chairman.
Come on here, quick.
Before you adjourn, I'd like to just let the commission know that I have contacted both the Department of Revenue and the Control Office. I'm still trying to get verification on the hundred thousand dollar reduction in the severance tax for the banking for Benton County. I'm still working on that. Haven't got a definitive answer, response yet. So, if anything else comes up, I can help with the state. Just please let me know and try to help.
Thank you. I'm going to tell you, this man out here works all the time. You flip on Facebook, he's somewhere eating, but he's always working forward, I tell you that.
Doing a good job.
Um, I was in touch with the Department of Office. I think Ms. Bernard told me that she had a few days left, but I'm hoping by the end of this week, we'll get our approval letter.
Motion, the chairman.
I have a motion. Name's second?
Second.
Come second, Chris. Mayor for about ninety-three. Discussion, not adjourned.